Good morning and welcome to the Board of Commissioners meeting for October 11th of 2016. We're glad you are with us this morning. Before we call our meeting officially to order, we will have the invocation presented to us this morning by Father Raymond Batasus Patansis, I'm sorry, from St. Benedict's Episcopal Church Hispanic Ministry in Smyrna. That'll be followed by the pledge presented by Field Training Officer Blair Kelly, who has been with Cobb County Police since July 2006. He currently works a day shift and is a member of the SWAT team. For those who wish to do so, please rise for the invocation and pledge.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit.
Grace be unto you and peace from God our Father and from the Lord Jesus Christ our Almighty God, Father, on all mercy, we dine on all thy servants to give thee most humble inheritance for all thy guns and loving kin to us and to all men. We bless thee for our creation, preservation, and all the blessings of this life, above all thine inestimable love, in the redemption of the world by our Lord Jesus Christ, for the meaning of grace and for the hope of glory. And we bless thee, give us all thy mercy, that our hearts may be thankful to you. Oh God, the honor of peace and love of conquer, to know you in external life and to serve you in perfect freedom, defend us, your humble servants, and all assaults of our enemies, that we surely, truthfully, in your defense, may not fear to the power of any enemy through the might of Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen. And God bless you in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, now and forever. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Father Raymond. Thank you, Field Officer Blair Kelly. We'll now call this meeting to order. Ms. Burrow will not be with us today as she attends her mother's. To her mother. Tab one is Cobb County Water Systems, one item, Director McCullers.
Good morning. We'd ask that you hold a public hearing for employment of consultant services where fees are expected to exceed $100,000 for Noonday Creek Water Reclamation Facility Chemical Systems Upgrade.
Thank you. We'll now open the public hearing for this item, this item only. Is there anyone wishing to speak for or against this item? Seeing in here, none, the public hearing is closed. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Tab two is Transportation Agency, Director Wilgus.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners, Mr. County Manager. Our first item is to conduct a public hearing prior to expending $100,000 or more for the program management, planning, design, and engineering and construction management of capital improvement projects at Cobb International Airport in McCollum Field. So we request the Board of Commissioners to conduct a public hearing prior to expending $100,000 or more for the program management, planning, design, engineering, and construction management of capital improvement projects at Cobb County International Airport.
Thank you. This time we'll open up a public hearing for this item on the Cobb Airport. Those wishing to speak for or against, please come forward at this time. Seeing in here, none, the public hearing is closed. Thank you, item two, please.
This item is to conduct a public hearing prior to expending $100,000 or more for operations, maintenance, and administrative services for Cobb Link, a service of Cobb Community Transit. The operations, maintenance, and administrative support of Cobb Link, a service of Cobb Community Transit, is undertaken through a multi-year contract with a private firm. We request the Board of Commissioners to conduct a public hearing prior to expending $100,000 or more for operations, maintenance, and administrative services for Cobb Link, a services of Cobb County Community Transit.
Thank you. We will now open a public hearing for this item, item number two, on the DOT Agenda item. Is there anyone here wishing to speak for or against this item? Seeing in here, none, the public hearing is closed. Thank you, Director.
Thank you, sir.
Tab three is Public Counselor.
The first speaker is Roberta Cook. If you'd come forward, please.
Good morning, Chairman Lee and Commissioners. My name is Roberta Cook. I live in Mabelton, Georgia. I'm active in a citizen group called the Cobb Parks Coalition. Our website is cobbparkscoalition.org. We are citizens from every Cobb County district who have united to support the $40 million Cobb County Park Bond funding, a referendum to buy new parkland in Cobb County, approved by the voters through the ballot box in November 2008. After 29 properties were recommended for acquisition under this program by the Commissioner-appointed Park Bond Citizen Advisory Committee, the program was suspended due to the downturn of the economy. As a result, no land was purchased for parks. Since the economy rebounded, we can thank you, Chairman Lee and Commissioners, for reinstatement of the Park Bond Program in January 2016. This year, the Commissioner-appointed Cobb County Recreation Board assumed the responsibility of vetting new property nominations for prospective parks. This month, that group will produce a list of properties recommended for acquisition. To purchase the recommended properties, the program requires funding, $40 million of funding. All year, Park Bond supporters attended every Commissioner meeting with anticipation of learning how the county will fulfill the $40 million obligation. So far, we've seen every funding opportunity sabotaged by this board along the avenues of taxes and budgeting. Why is funding a problem when you have consent from the people you govern? In November 2008, Cobb County voters made a decision to spend $40 million to buy parkland. Voting is the purest form of democracy. Voting is a method we use to make choices in this country. Voting is how you were hired for your job, to be our representatives. You are accountable to the voters, so fulfilling a voter mandate should be effortless. Please tell the Cobb County voters today how you will secure the $40 million needed to execute the parkland acquisition program. In closing, for those in the audience who would like more information about the $40 million Cobb County Park Bond referendum, please visit the Cobb Parks Coalition website. The web address is cobbparkscoalition.org. Thank you.
The next speaker is Cynthia Patterson.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Cynthia Patterson, and I live in District Two. Dozens of citizens wore green and waved signs supporting green space at the September 27th Board of Commissioners Meeting and Budget Hearing. Commissioner Burrell, District Three, proposed a resolution to increase the county's debt service mileage by 0.13 mils to fund $24.7 million of Park Bond 2008. A 0.13 mil increase is roughly an annual property tax of $10.40 on a $200,000 home. Two-thirds of voters approved Park Bond 2008 for $40 million to purchase parkland. In the past eight years, no land has been purchased because the Commissioners ignored the will of the people and refused to issue the bond. We expect the Commissioners to find a way to fully fund $40 million. $24.7 million is a start, but $40 million is the will of the people. Cobb County's 2030 Plan shows a shortfall of 1,448 acres to meet its goal of saving 10% of county land as green space. If Park Bond 2008 had been issued, about 350 acres could have been purchased. Commissioner Burrell also proposes a new additional $40 million Parks Bond that could be on the ballot March 2017. After fully funding Park Bond 2008, let's get behind a new $40 million bond and purchase green space before all the prime properties are developed and flattened, paved over. It's time to get serious about protecting Cobb's vanishing green space. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Takes us to tab four. Unless there's any comments from the Commission, I move to approve the consent agenda as revised and authorize the execution of the necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel. Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries four zero. Thank you. Tab five is Transportation.
Good morning again. This morning, we've got six items. Our first item is to approve change order number one, final to the contract with C.W. Matthews Contracting Company, Inc., for Factory Shoals Road, project number E4220, CCDOT contract number 000864. Factory Shoals Road is an approved thoroughfare improvements project in the 2011 SPOLOST Transportation Improvement Program. Construction is complete, and change order number one, final to the contract with C.W. Matthews Contracting Company, Inc., a savings to the project in the amount of $239,609.69, is requested due to variations between the original and final plan quantities. We request the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one, final to the contract with C.W. Matthews Contracting Company, Inc., a savings to the project in the amount of $239,606.69 for Factory Shoals Road, project number E4220, CCDOT contract number 000864. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Motion to approve.
Second. Call a question. Motion carries four zero. Thank you. Item two, please.
Our second item is to approve change order number one, final to the contract with Detection Engineering Technology, Inc., to rebuild and upgrade the traffic signal at the intersection of South Gordon Road and Blair Bridge Road at Bryant Elementary School, project number E8080, CCDOT contract number 000650. School Zone Safety and Operational Improvements is an approved component in the 2011 SPOLOST Transportation Improvement Program. Construction is complete, and change order number one, final to the contract with Detection Engineering Technology, a savings to the project in the amount of $2,697.31, is requested due to variations between the original and final plan quantities. We request the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one, final to the contract with Detection Engineering Technology, a savings to the project in the amount of $2,697.31, to rebuild and upgrade the traffic signal at the intersection of South Gordon Road and Blair Bridge Road at Bryant Elementary School, project number E8080, CCDOT contract number 000650. Authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you. Commissioner Kip.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any comments? Call a question. What? I hear some. Sorry. Motion carries four zero. Sorry.
Our third item is to approve a utility relocation agreement with Georgia Power Company for preliminary engineering and relocation of facilities on Interstate North Parkway and Interstate North Circle, project number E4190, CCDOT contract number 001044. Interstate North Parkway and Interstate North Circle is an approved project in the thoroughfare improvements component of the 2011 SPOLOST Transportation Improvement Program. Construction of this project will require Georgia Power Company to remove and relocate their existing facilities. Since the facilities may be located on a Georgia Power Company's easement, the cost for the relocation in the amount not to exceed $526,867 may be reimbursable by Cobb County. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a utility relocation agreement with Georgia Power Company in the amount not to exceed $526,867 for preliminary engineering and relocation of facilities on Interstate North Parkway and Interstate North Circle, project number E4190, CCDOT contract number 001044. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents in a form substantially similar to the attached and is approved by the County Attorney's Office.
Commissioner, motion to approve. Second. Call a question. Motion carries four zero. Next item, please.
Item number four is to approve a consultant services agreement with Heath and Lineback Engineers, Inc., for engineering design services of Cherokee Street, project number X2603, CCDOT contract number 000964. Cherokee Street is an approved roadway improvements project in the 2016 SPOLOST Transportation Improvement Program. This is a joint project with the City of Kennesaw. The Department has negotiated a final scope of services and fees with Heath and Lineback Engineers, Inc., in the amount not to exceed $391,898.67 for engineering design of Cherokee Street, a joint project with the City of Kennesaw. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a consultant services agreement with Heath and Lineback Engineers, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $391,898.67 for engineering design services of Cherokee Street, a joint project with the City of Kennesaw, project number X2603, CCDOT contract number 000964. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Weatherford.
Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
Call a question. Motion carries four zero. Item five, please.
Item five is to authorize procurement of proprietary software and professional services for the upgrade and enhancement of the Cartograph Work and Asset Management Software System and authorize procurement of associated hardware and software, project number X2534. Transportation Technology is an approved project in the traffic management, traffic signal timing, and planning component of the 2016 SPOLOST Transportation Improvement Program. We request the Board of Commissioners authorize the procurement of proprietary software and professional services in an amount not to exceed $136,500 for the upgrade enhancement of the Cartograph Work and Asset Management Software System, project number X2534, and authorize the procurement of associated hardware and software in an amount not to exceed $62,600.
Thank you. Commissioners, I'll bring this forward as a motion. Is there a second? Call a question. Motion carries four zero. Item six, please.
Item six is authorize installation of spreader hopper equipment for inclement weather and supply storage, project number X2605. Inclement weather equipment and supply storage is an approved project in the roadway improvements component of the 2016 SPOLOST Transportation Improvement Program. We request the Board of Commissioners authorize the installation of spreader hopper equipment in the amount not to exceed $2,038.34 for inclement weather equipment and supply storage, project number X2605.
I'll bring this forward as a motion, Commissioners. Is there a second? Call a question. Motion carries four zero. Thank you, Director.
Thank you, sir.
Tab six, Support Services Agency, Property Management, one item. John.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. Our item today deals with the 2016 SPOLOST, the East Marietta Library and Cultural Center. And during the last several months, our project manager has been working with the design with, in coordination with the libraries, the parks, and that design builder. And they've come to a final design and a guaranteed maximum price. And the Department recommends that the Board of Commissioners approve supplemental agreement number one to the contract with Batson Cook Company in the amount of $9,610,152 to establish the guaranteed maximum price of $10,954,082 and 400 calendar days for the rebuild of the East Marietta Library and Cultural Center as part of the 2016 SPOLOST project to be located at 2051 Lower Roswell Road, Marietta. Authorize procurement of incidentals in an amount not to exceed $20,000 through the purchasing department. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you. Commissioner, right?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to point out to the folks in the audience and listening that if you look at this agenda item, it shows it guaranteed the total price of $12,208,000. I know that some folks may ask, well, what's the difference? Two items that were part of additional SPOLOST, one was repaving of the parking lots in the road in Sewell Park, which is incorporated into that $12,208,000. And also, the 2011 SPOLOST was going to replace the roof and the HVAC on the existing East Marietta Library, and that, those monies have been incorporated since we're going to be building a new library. And so that's really where the difference comes between the $10,954,000 and the $12,208,000. So make a motion to approve.
Second, that motion. Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, John.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Tab seven, Public Safety Agency, this one item. Destiny Davison to present.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager, Ms. Dance. This agenda item is to authorize the purchase of animal control vans, part of the 2016 SPOLOST. The current fleet of vans assigned to animal control have high mileage and are over 10 years old. The 2016 SPOLOST, countywide Tier One, included the purchase of two vans for animal control project X1061 in the amount of $108,000. Due to the cost of only, of one van, only one replacement will be purchased this time through the Georgia State Contract, 9999SPDES401993730009, in the amount of $69,575.60. The van will be added to the animal control fleet. An agenda item for the purchase of the second van will be brought back before the Board once the additional funding source has been identified. The purchase of the animal control van is an eligible project under the 2016 SPOLOST, and funding is available through the 2016 SPOLOST. As our recommendation, the Board of Commissioners authorize the purchase of an animal control van in the amount of $69,575.60. As part of the 2016 SPOLOST, countywide improvements, project X1061, authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you. Commissioner Weatherford.
Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
Call a question. Motion carries four zero. Thank you, Destiny. Tab eight, Community Development, one item.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Dana Johnson, Cobb County Community Development. I'm here to present to you the Plenary Commission recommendations on the current code amendment package that is going through process. At your last meeting on September 27th, you had a 1:30 afternoon work session that delivered to you the recommendations in this round of code amendments. You had your first public hearing that evening at 7:00. Your second public hearing, per our new processor, will be on October 25th at 7:00 p.m. But the purpose for this particular meeting is to deliver the Plenary Commission recommendations on Chapter 134 that are contained in the code amendments. On October 4th, they held a public hearing and recommended an amendment to the sign permit fees that were previously recommended by staff. They recommended that instead of listing specific fees, that instead we just make reference to the approval of the fee schedule as the Board of Commissioners had already done in this past round of budget hearings. So with that, sir, that concludes this agenda item. Again, the purpose was just to deliver to the Plenary Commission recommendations, and they voted on this unanimously, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you, sir. Takes us to tab nine. Tab nine was pulled yesterday in agenda prep for further consideration and review by the staff and the Board, which takes us to tab 10. This item also was pulled in agenda prep yesterday for further review by staff and the Board. Are there any comments on either tab 10 or tab nine? Commissioner Weatherford.
On tab 10, I have concerns, Mr. Chairman, that we, I'm not sure when we pulled it. We had consensus, and then I'm not sure when we pulled it too. So if you could enlighten us as where it would be brought forward again. My understanding would be at the night meeting. Is that correct?
It was yesterday, we had four Commissioners present to desire to be pulled, and it's usually the custom of this, this Board to pull items if they're asked or requested by a Commissioner or two Commissioners. When it comes back, will be up to the County Manager after conversations with him and staff and the Commissioners. That's how they want to move forward.
So to pull an agenda item, we don't need to vote on it in public?
That's correct.
Is that correct, Ms. Dance? We don't need to vote on this item to pull it? Okay. I like to go on record that I would like to bring this back as quickly as possible so that we can have a vote, full Board, especially when Commissioner Burrow returns from her time with her mother. And I feel like that this particular item is very important to the 4,000-plus employees we have in this county that have been waiting two years for the results of this study, and we found the results. And we need to show in good faith that we plan to implement at least one of the four options presented to it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Commissioner Kip.
Just wanted to clarify for those who may be watching this via video what tab 10 and what tab nine refer to, who may not know. Tab nine refers to wireless providers being able to install mini-cell communications equipment on the county's right-of-way. And there was some conversation to clarify the procedure around that and to understand that policy with respect to our current policy where there are larger mini-cell, or larger cell phone towers that are installed. Tab 10 refers to the study of the county classification and compensation study, and I share the sentiment of Commissioner Weatherford that it's important that this item be brought back. I would make the suggestion that it be brought back for the October evening meeting, and because Commissioner Burrell isn't here, which is the reason why we've deferred making a decision, well, I think, I don't want to speak for any other Commissioner, but in conversation, I supported us not making a decision on this until she is present, but I would suggest that if she is not present by that date, that we still vote on this item as we've made other business decisions without all five Commissioners present in the past, and that should be given some consideration here. There's been some conversation about this agenda item being pushed towards next year instead of us making a decision on this item this year, and I want to go on the record to express that I think that we should be voting on this matter this year, that our employees have been waiting for several years for the county to make adjustments to make sure that their pay is comparable to others who are working in like positions and have been working tirelessly to make sure that we provide excellent services to the county. With the challenges that we've had since the economic recession in 2011, we have an opportunity to finally address that with this agenda item, and I would like to encourage the Board to support this item coming back in, to vote on this item in support of our employees who are working tirelessly day by day to make the county the best that it can be.
Let me just, let me be clear for the parts that were left out of the comments made today. This project was authorized in April of 2014, over two years ago, and it's been delay after delay after delay for several different reasons, mostly of which could be put at the foot of the Consultants Group that we brought in as to why this has been delayed in getting to a final recommendation. I was adequately prepared to deal with this situation and this whole entire project. In fact, I was one of the ones that advocated moving forward with this pain class study two years two years ago, two and a half years ago, to make sure that we are competitive so we keep the good people and we do the right thing by the folks that are here while balancing our responsibilities to the community to have a balanced budget. But two and a half years to bring it forward, and all of a sudden now it's a rush, when there's such a huge impact to be considered in the long-term implication is something that can't be taken lightly by this board, especially since this board has commented in the past many, many times that there are a lot of priorities that need to be funded. I think collectively, those priorities that need to be funded, in addition to this, need to be weighed, and it needs to be weighed by the people that will be here and in place on January 1st, 2017. Quickly, frankly, you all know this, I won't be here. And I've said from the beginning that I I'm going to, out of respect for the incoming administration, decisions that could be deferred for his leadership and for his input ought to be done. This agenda item specifically says at the request of the district commissioners that this item, this will not be implemented till April 9th to 2017, giving time for it to be implemented after the 3% funding that's been already approved as part of the budget and part of our our annual review process. This would then be implemented on top of that. It was a request from this commission. It pushed out implementation to April of next year. We have money accrued to finish FY17. It has implications in FY18, and to ask me when I've clearly made it clear that I would not vote on something as part of a future administration's responsibility to try to find funding, I just think this board needs to really, really think about what they're asking me to do because I can't support that, and as I said yesterday. So it's not a matter of not supporting the project. I led the project. Unfortunately, the vendor took two and a half years to bring it to us, and we find ourselves now in a position where it's being asked to be voted on by a chairman who's responsible for the budget by somebody that won't be here when it's implemented and when the full impact is is made in FY18. It's not that I don't believe that it may or may not be the right thing to do. That's not for me to decide anymore. It's up to the rest of the board to decide. And we have five commissioners, and I think we need to hear from all five. Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to first publicly thank and acknowledge the dedication of all the county employees who continue to provide exceptional service with SPOS. We are in unique times. This is the first time in over 30 years that the county citizens have had this type of transition in leadership. None of the sitting commissioners, nor most of the county employees, were here the last time the people of the county requested a change in leadership in this manner. Although some say that four out of five commissioners that will be here next year, it would be irresponsible for this board to not acknowledge and listen to the voice of the people. The one who is responsible by law to present to this board a balanced budget is not here. The incoming chairman has assembled four citizen teams to review the county's strategic plan to recommend to the incoming chairman changes that might be brought to this board for consideration. This strategic plan created by the sitting chairman was was explained to be the guideline for how this board would spend the people's money. For this board to make decisions before those recommendations are brought forward without determining how they would be paid for is not how this board should function. Although I understand the employees' desires for raises and benefit improvements, this board would simply be putting their costs on the people's credit card without knowing how and when they could be paid for. Since the incoming chairman is responsible for producing a balanced budget, that burden would be shifted to the incoming chairman without any input from him. That is why I strongly support and commend Chairman Lee in his request for a delay on this vote on this issue.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yes, Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
There has been a lot of discussion over time about balancing responsibilities amongst all commissioners, and we had an opportunity to balance the consideration for this budget on all commissioners this year with the way the budget was presented. I think the chairman gave a lot of us opportunity to weigh through the recommendations and to have a more active voice. While that opportunity was presented during the budget considerations, this has been a desire that has been expressed by members of this board for a period of a longer period of time to be actively involved in the decision-making of this board, recognizing that it takes three out of five people on this board to make a decision. While the chairman is responsible for presenting the budget, the chairman is not solely responsible for the budget. All commissioners are responsible for the budget, and we all have the ability to make decisions that affect how the budget is determined. It is odd to hear commissioners want to defer responsibility to the chairman when that has been ongoing criticism that we have not had balanced share of responsibility towards this process in the past. And this is a tremendous opportunity, I think, that we all have to share this responsibility of the governance of this county amongst all commissioners. And instead of us taking that to task and showing that we all lead, we are all of a sudden deferring that responsibility and and to me contradicting the desire for us to have balanced leadership on this board. While I while I support the chairman's success when he does join the board or the chairman elect when he does join the board next year, I think we have the ability to set that chairman up for success. And by us deferring all of these decisions when someone is coming in new to the county, has to learn county operations, we are putting a lot on that individual's plate when we have been here and have the experience to be able to help usher in this county, to help set this county up for success and the new chair. I also want to share that as a commissioner who's been here for four years, there have been many decisions made by prior boards that have bound me as a commissioner. The commitment to reduce the mileage was not made when all of us were here. However, we have jointly made a commitment to reduce the mileage in accordance to those commitments made. So I find it, again, somewhat of contradiction for us to say we cannot make decisions that bind further people in later administrations when we do that with every decision that we make. We make a lot of capital decisions, which we have to make future operational considerations for because we think that's in the best interest of the county. We do this every day. Just because we have a new chair coming in doesn't mean that services do not need to be provided also to the public diligently. And it's one thing for us to sit here and our it's one thing for us to sit here as commissioners and think that the pay of these hourly employees don't matter, but these employees, some of them are working in very tenuous circumstances and are trying to do their best for the county and are looking to us to lead and to provide some sense of encouragement. And I think that we are somewhat far removed from them when we think that it's okay to throw this decision on someone who is new to the county instead of us making a decision that we have said has been on the table for at least two and a half years. We have the ability to lead. We have the ability to lead today, and I think we have the ability to set my voice for success for success, and we have the ability to support these employees today. And I just don't understand this deferred sharing of responsibility when, again, we have been we have been asking for several years to share that responsibility amongst all of us.
Sure, why not?
First off, no one has said that the pay of the employees doesn't matter, and I will remind my fellow commissioners that the current chairman, when he asked for our input and participation in the budget process, his number one requirement was that if you want to bring something to the budget, you show how it's going to be paid for because that is the responsibility of a diligent commission that exercises its due share of responsibility with the people's money. Nowhere has anything been brought forward definitively to say how this is going to be paid for moving forward from 2018. There is money in the budget, the $10 million for 2017, but it is irresponsible for this board, and I challenge my fellow commissioners, if they want to bring something forward, show how it's going to be paid for, put it on the record how you're going to pay for it. Don't just say we should do something because Chairman Lee made it very clear that if you want to participate in the budget process, you have to talk how it's going to be paid for.
Mr. Stewart.
Thank you.
And I'm going to just.
Cut it out.
Now, go ahead and make your comments, but I'm going to leave it at the at the end of this. We're going to move on to next. We have commissioner comments coming up. I would encourage this commission board to have some dialogue among themselves.
All I was going to say, sir, is that we have, in deference to the new incoming chairman, voted for a budget that you proposed that did not increase the mileage, while I and several others would recommend mileage increase in order to fund needed county services and employees that we have needed for many, many, many years. I feel like it is our job to provide the services that the citizens expect, even if that might require a mileage rate increase. In deference to that, we passed a continuation budget with the hopes that as these needs come up, we can meet and vote on them separately and add it to the budget for when we set the mileage in July of next year. This money for these employees have been set aside for many time for this particular purpose. What we're talking about is not funding 17, it's funding 18. If we're going to start worrying about 18 and 19, we need to worry about what we're going to do next year, which is the budget that we passed. This money was set aside, and we'll fully fund what we need for the paying class study and part of 18. So I think in deference, and we agree with Commissioner Cupid, it is our responsibility to take care of those that got us where we are, that brought us through the hard times, that took furloughs, that did all the other things they've done. We need to reward them and to keep them, and we can't afford to lose our valuable employees. And I want to support this and show a sign of support for our employees.
Great. I appreciate that comment, and I encourage the commissioners to get together and talk about what their next strategy, get with the county manager, and try to come to consensus of how it should move forward. Tab 11 is our second. There are none. Tab 12, commissioner comments. Commissioner Cupid?
Yes, thank you. In continuation of the last discussion, I would like to share that this board did have the decision to fund this and some other items when we set the mileage. Also, we knew that this agenda item was coming before us, if not last year, at least for two years, and we could have planned accordingly. We chose one year to put money away towards planning for this. We could have done it for two years. We could have done it with this budget, but we made the decision not to, and we're holding ourselves hostage to the narrative that we created. This is not that we've had external pressure saying slash the mileage to the rate that we slashed it. We did it, and then we're holding ourselves hostage even when there's external communication saying we support you funding certain services. We support our employees, and we have chosen not to do that. So there was a funding option that was on the table, that was discussed, that was debated. So I don't think this, you know, putting forward to support the employees through this pay-in-class study today is irresponsible. I think we were not responsive to making sure that we had funding on the table when we started having conversations about this in the first place, and I think that needs to change. But I don't think we get there by not making a decision today. When we made, and I keep saying this, but I'm going to say it again, if we can make a decision to fund the Braves within a two-week or two-month time period, you can't tell me we can't do this for our employees. We can exhibit the same level of creativity to make it happen because the way this county runs, it is not any of these commissioners up here that are going and applying those services for those citizens. When those citizens call us, I'm calling a department. I'm calling somebody that works here to get it done. It is not it is not us doing that, and I think we owe them a level of respect to make a decision on this and to not keep kicking the can down the road. Those are my comments for that.
Thank you. Commissioner Weatherford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of things before I show a short video. I just wanted to tell everyone that Congressman Barry Loudermild is having a Veterans Expo this afternoon at Lake Point up in Emerson, and it's from 2:00 to 6:00 o'clock. And it's any veterans or anyone that you know is a veteran, it's a resource center that they're having today, talking about jobs, health benefits, home loans, Home for Heroes, all the different things that are available to our veterans that we need to support. And that is this afternoon from 2:00 to 6:00 at Lake Point up in Emerson, just a short drive up 75. So mark that on the calendar. This week and this month indeed is Public Safety Appreciation Month, and a lot of our citizens have been reaching out to our public safety officials. We had the awards ceremony last Monday, which several of our officers and firemen have received awards for their contribution to public safety and to our community. And I just wanted to show you a quick video of one example of how the community is reaching out to our officers and supporting public safety.
We were so excited today to have at Bullard our first responders. Our PTSA, along with our fourth grade students and faculty and staff, performed for them to give them a thank you for all the wonderful work they do in our community.
I thought those songs were great, and I'm going to be singing 2468 for the rest of the day.
Our fourth graders have been practicing in music, some songs so that we can show our appreciation to our first responders.
We were so honored that they thought of us. You know, the kids put a lot of effort into practicing this music, and they were so enthusiastic, and our officers were enthusiastic back to them. It's just it's just wonderful to have this experience. It makes it all worthwhile on everything the officers and the firefighters go out and do every day.
They go to work every day to keep our community safe, but ultimately, they go to work for you.
We got a chance today to meet firefighters and police and go into the police cars and the fire trucks.
Our technology specialist, Stephanie Hicks, also used our students to help create some thank you notes, and our students were able to deliver those today.
It's great just being able to interact with the kids in the community. That's what it goes back to, is just, you know, your basic foundations.
It was fun seeing my dad listening and us participating.
This was an excellent chance for our fourth graders to get to meet our first responders in person, to talk with them, and also to share with them some music. We're just thankful for them and what they do for our community.
All I can say is God bless our public safety. God bless Cobb County. God bless America. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have one additional comment. I'd like to echo Commissioner Weatherford's thanks to all the public safety personnel, and I want to commend and thank the East Cobb Business Association, who will be hosting a public safety celebration for the police this Thursday night over in East Cobb.
Thank you. I too want to congratulate all the public safety employees who were recognized last week and the winners of those world awards at the Chamber Breakfast last week. It was a great program, as always. In terms of community recognition, we had currently had two schools, recently had two schools named Blue Ribbon Schools by the U.S. Secretary of Education, Mount Bethel, and St. Joseph Catholic Church. We congratulate them. There's only 300 schools across the county, the country, to get that recognition, so we're proud to have two in our county. The Kennesaw State Division of Global Affairs recently received the International Education Program Award Governor's International Awards last week. We congratulate them, as well as Home Depot, one of our largest employers here in Cobb and across the country, was recently recognized nationally for having one of the 50 best intern programs in the country, which we're glad they call Cobb County home. And last but not least, we want to congratulate our own Mr. Bob Weatherford, who became a certified county commissioner, just recently transferring over from his city leadership into his county leadership. We congratulate you on that continuing education as to the operations of a county government versus cities. We appreciate your commitment to the citizens of Cobb County.
Time to get up.
Time to wake up, guys. Senator, County Manager, anything further?
No, sir.
We're adjourned. We're adjourned.